Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February 27th council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01. Could I please, with the agenda, move 13-2 to 18-2? 18-2? And 18-2 will become 18-3? Is there any other changes? Could have someone adopt the agenda then? Councilor Jessman, all in favor? Carry on. I'd like to welcome Amanda Dabchuk and Director Ruth Rolle to give a presentation on the Cultural Park and Museum. Welcome, Amanda.
Thank you for the invitation to share what we've been working on. You're all aware of the park and when you drive by, you can see the, under the snow, what's being done out there.
So the first slide we have here kind of shows an overview of the park, so we'd like the opportunity to bring council up to date. So because we have some new councils, do you think it would be good just to give an overview? So we're working on the three main memorials. Maybe that we want to talk about those three while we're on?
So there's the Truth and Reconciliation Monument. The poles are up already and that is to commemorate the residential schools in the region. That there's, like there was two and then a day school. So there's the Missing and Murdered Indigenous People Monument, and that's a basalt column, or two basalt columns, and they'll represent the missing and murdered people of our region. And we have the Indigenous War Veterans Monument, kind of situated beside the drum and the Oloha Arbor. We haven't finished the actual details on that, but there'll be flag poles and something to showcase the Aboriginal veterans in the region.
So one of the things is that we have circular pathways and that's not just accommodating processions and people, but we also have an arbor that you can see kind of, it's in my figure, but there's like wood arbor all along. We'll talk about that a little bit later on where we'd be able to have the addresses or different things for when we're having the ceremonies there. And the green area in the middle will accommodate about 200 to 300 people when we're having ceremonies. Now, one of the things that Amanda's just gonna talk a little bit about is the courtyard because that's moved on to about phase four right about now. So did you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so the courtyard will be more attached to the Friendship Center in the main building. So the bigger building that is Friendship Center now and the smaller building, they use that size because of the shed that is already there. So the plan is to remove that shed or utilize it to make a space where we'll have a kitchen that will serve the outdoors. There'll be bathrooms in there, a little seating area, maybe some artisans things to happen in there. But yeah, we'll have, it'll be kind of like a, one of those like well, kitchen vehicles, whatever.
Yeah.
And so you'll be able to access the kitchen from the outside to serve the public. And there'll be fire pit.
And that's kind of on hold right now because you have the building looked at and it's an estimates on getting it fixed up and it sounds like maybe another building.
Yeah, I'm just waiting on my third estimate to come in. So as soon as that comes in, we'll see how that looks and how much time we need fundraising for, I don't know, grant writing something, but yeah, that's a whole other phase.
So we've got a whole project team on this, but most part we've had George Harris Glaber, the Senior Landscape Architect, and he's had several people working under him, as well as everybody here I think had met, Cheltenham King when she was here and she did a lot of the engagement studies. She's a young Aboriginal architect. As well as we've had Murdering Land students, D and B, which Amanda will talk about later. And then Amanda and myself, I'd say mostly Amanda, I can do more of the technical stuff for helping with some of the contracts and we've had the hundred-page contracts and that sort of thing. So we're just gonna start off here on this beautiful rendering that they've done, showing the monuments a little more closely. And did you want to talk a little bit about what we're gonna have done for the beads in that armory, reconciliation?
Yeah, so this monument we hope to showcase and open by March 31st as a part of the first grant that needs to be done. So like I said, this is the residential school monument. So the beads will represent people from the area. There'll be, I think she said 18 specific orange beads that we can get etched with whatever the wording, we're trying to look for that wording right now, whether it says a community or... But we do have the option of other beads to be purchased and those can be purchased from, say, family, right? Who have lost somebody in residential school. So when you look closely, it is around a medicine wheel and the, there are red, those are dots, but those are the communities of the residential schools, right? So there's Fort Millian, I think it's St. Henry's, and Chayque and the day school and Yawar. And they are all situated along the Peace River. That's incorporated into the fire pit. So these are how the beads look with these orange tubes. They are six and 12 inches long. And when Juliana, she'll be here the 27th, 28th, the 29th, and she will personally add those beads to the monument.
And the one picture here is actually the signs. We made a temporary sign that'll sit by that monument so people have an understanding of the symbolism behind the monument. Eventually, when the park's finished, we'd like to just have, so we don't take away from the beauty of the park, we'd just like to have signage at the entrances and not anywhere in the park so that we don't take away from that. Our tones, I'm hitting buttons here. So then talk about the basalt columns a bit here, if you want to talk about the significance of them.
Yeah, so these are really neat. This one is showing three, but it's now two. There are two eight-foot basalt columns that they've split and in the middle, they've made bands that represent skirts. So of the MIP, right, I already missed it, people. And we've picked two skirt colors. I think one was more of a red and then, so we picked B.
B and D.
Yeah, B and D. So they'll, they'll be light, the lighting will shine through and you'll see the skirts.
I'm just gonna flip back here so that, oops. So these basalt rocks were handpicked from a Vancouver quarry and then they were sent to Senior Editor of Calgary and Visuals Gates who's working on them. They have split them in half. That was the whole process to split them in half. They've been polished and there's coats and coats of resin putting on them. They would be split in half, after that with metal plates put in. And then the lights, which you can see here when they talk about these lights. These lights will be, will be reflected, those would be like the, representing the red ribbon. And there'll be a light that goes to the middle of the column. So this is like ground breaking. There's nothing like this that has been designed before. And every part of these monuments are very, very significant. So that, those is our goal, going to be here next week?
Next, no, not next week, the week after.
Correct, we've done, yeah. So this is the next one, this is the Arbor and the Van Shell. So if you want to talk about everything.
Well, so the whole park was representative of a drum, right? Everything in the park that we see is the round and represents the drum because that was something that they found in common with all the cultures in our region. So we have our, I'm so excited when I see the drum shout this. So that's cedar.
Basalt and cedar, again, handpicked all these pieces and they've been working on, it was pretty phenomenal, then engineered. You can see here, they actually had to add some engineering. They wanted to make sure personal load and that sort of thing. And this is, this is just a beauty. It'll be a canvas shell that'll go on top that will take off during the winter. So it'll just like the sky just come through. What we plan on doing is providing us with two canvas shells. They can just kind of go on with cords, just like a drum would, representing that. And we may do some paintings, some significant paintings. So when it's up, it'll be relatively translucent, so you could look up. So we may do something significant, but maybe do it like take it off at the end of this year and then have some local artists do something with that. Again, this is just, this is the Arbor, so those are all those pieces that we're all, all wearing.
That will, yeah, make the circle of the.
So this is just showing the size and the beauties, this is like beautiful wood. And that's one meaning against, just to kind of show you the look like. So those are huge. We had the screw piles engineered for this and it was just like a huge amount of work. It probably took about two months or so to get all these screw piles and concrete, everything in so that everything will be absolutely sturdy and standing there, so. And this is the history rock. So you can see our Blue River that ties everything, comes all the way through this. What there is is there's concrete nodes for them that are different areas there throughout the park. And we have a, it shows a wood fence.
We actually, we don't have that yet.
We don't have that yet. It's a steel fence that's in big shape memorially for now. It's not aesthetically pleasing, but eventually we'll have a cedar fence too. But yeah, so one of the next grants we've applied for kind of.
To a system, that, for the benches.
With the benches, we have in this grant that we'll talk about. So we'll, we'll, I can just sort of, so this sort of shows you what the signage is like. The idea is they have these placards on these signs. The signs would be relatively permanent and we could change the placards. So if we wanted to have, represent different areas or, you know, have like, maybe it's all the oil on the history rock or we have all of Indigenous people, we could change things up after a couple of years if we wanted to, using those nodes. And we could also put the codes there too, so if we wanted to do translation or whatever. So all that's a part of it was, and we could do the sound as well if we wanted to. Just before we go into these, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about money and then we'll go back.
So, yeah, money.
So we're working right now on a budget of $773,000 and $500,000 of that is from our Tourism Relief Fund, which was Prairie Camp. But we also had several other smaller grants that Amanda and I wrote. We have through Canadian Health Initiative, we have Canadian Heritage. The town has contributed $100,000. Toco has contributed $40,000. And then the Friendship Center has contributed funds as well. So with that 773, what we're gonna have done is the, first of all, we've had an architect for this entire project, which has been like fairly costly. They've been doing all the project management for us, which has been fairly in-depth. We had all the land clearance of the museum side as well as the cultural park side. And most of the grading is done. There's still some compaction that has to get done. We ran into cold weather and maybe could do any more of that. There's culverts that are installed. So if you're coming to the museum across from the Friendship Center, there's a very big ditch there. So there's been a culvert and that's been covered up. So you could actually, in some white gravel, so you could actually walk across there right now. Eventually, that's where the sidewalk's supposed to go. The monuments will, they're all, as we showed, are being developed right now. They'll be delivered March 6th and it'll be installed.
Is it the week after? I don't know if it's March 6th.
March 6th or the next week.
March 12th, yeah.
Yeah. And then we have lighting too, that we've talked about. So also the reconciliation monument, that's the big steel one. There's supposed to be light that goes up in there, it's gonna go down the highway. You should be able to see that, we can change the colors on that as well as the basalt column being lit. And then as you're going through the museum walk, there's some lights there as well too. The idea is that you can use this year-round. We also have those great big render rocks that call. We have those all the time.
Those aren't piles of snow, yeah, those are piles of rock in the park.
And eventually, we thought those might even be ideal for getting plaques on when people that wanted to sponsor that type of thing. Because they're quite significant large blocks. And the site furniture has been ordered as well too because we're trying to fulfill all the grant requirements by March 31st. So we're on, we're on target for everything. If we're lucky to get the, and RED grant, we'd like to get the finished grading, hearts, people, trees, all that type of thing and all the signage that we're showing through the museum history walk, getting that completed. What we're really looking for now is around $300,000 to get all that concrete done and that's gonna really complete the park. It will be open regardless, but the concrete is really gonna finish it with the concrete river and the nodes and the sidewalk. And then, yeah, that's just about, let's see if I can go backwards here now. Right, so we'll see how well I do on this one.
The architect sent us little videos.
They did this in foreign work.
So the Blue River, is that stamped concrete? Or is it resin or what?
It's just colored, colored concrete.
The, it's stamped with the medicine wheel?
No, no, the river part.
The river is just colored concrete now.
Yeah, yeah, maybe just color concrete.
Can everybody see this? Is it coming up larger there?
Can't see any, just the river.
Well, it's not showing anything there.
Yeah, the picture is very noisy and messy.
Did you guys see people walking?
Yeah.
Like moving.
Well, they're not actually moving.
Oh, they're not moving.
One of the things they did ask me is if I knew of a artist that would help them with the MATE Sash to how, when that happens, right? Like the concrete, you've seen in the pictures how the MATE Sash has been incorporated in front of one of the monuments. So I haven't.
It's not shown yet?
No. Found anyone yet, so that hurt.
Well, I don't know, I do this and that was a cool one.
Yet just control.
No, I haven't, it's played online, it's just not playing there.
Sorry, looking through your screen.
Yeah, well, I tried it again, tried new share.
What about if he go, he doesn't see it?
You're a bit too early for our new audio visual.
So did the beads light up, Amanda, or is it the columns that light up?
It's the, it's just the light that was shining up at them.
Overseeing if there's nobody else.
You can share it.
Yeah. Anyways, that was the end of our presentation. If anybody has any questions?
Council, questions?
Yes.
So for the two levels of undercurrent funding, what are the options?
As it comes in, or will it come down in phases?
But there's no pending grants that we're aware of or, like Prairie Camp, is it doing a Prairie Camp 2 or?
Well, the NRED.
The, yeah, the Northern Region Autonomous Campaign. We're waiting on that one. You haven't heard anything yet.
But we were told they're ready, that the total program is only $3 million and there's been.
$10 million.
I think there's been hundreds of applications. It's overspread, yeah.
I've also been talking with ACO. So they're supposed to let, let us know by.
And then we are, there's one with CN Rail that we're going to do this week.
Yeah, we have applied and there was some changeover in staff there and so they just realized that they would look at the application so they spoke with us and they have resented, so we're reapplying on that one.
Yeah, we reached out to the mills, well, Toco, so, you know, they gave some and I think that in the future, if we need anymore, they'll gladly give us some.
Does it, did they draw, how does access to any special grant funding or?
I haven't reached out to them. Mine generally could have talked to some of the communities in the region to see what they, they would like to contribute. I know I've shared with some of the GANTHA members, you know, they were really excited about, you know, hosting events and like we do a lot of hand game tournaments with them so they were excited to have some outside in the park. They might be interested in helping somehow.
And they see that, of course.
I'm just thinking they may have access to other grants and funding that they don't, so.
Indigenous tourism?
Yeah, I'm actually a part of Indigenous tourism. They do, they do know a little about the park. So I'll hand it over.
I think they don't want to, they wanted to, like, when we have it up and running, they wanted to like help with the programming and the brochures and pay people to be there and that type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of.
Like, well, you know, we'll need a maintenance person, we'll need like workers to work at the park, keep up the running, so that was more of their waiting.
Like have elders and stuff there and paying them and, yeah.
Paying the knowledge keepers and.
Yeah.
Just a general question regarding like some of these bigger funds like Prairie Camp, Canadian Heritage, NRED. Like with projects like this, are they typically, is the funding typically more successful if a project is already well-established and underway? I'm just like from a historical perspective, do these funds pay out again? Like if it's, if it's half completed? Like I'm sure the first round is the toughest to get, but, or is it, or is there any?
Well, Prairie Camp is, this, this grant is gonna be gone.
Right, but would they?
Or does it, like, I mean, it's, this round is, yeah.
That was a one-time thing and.
This was a relief, tourism relief grant, so.
Yeah, I just, I'm, yeah, I'm just wondering like sort of in general with these types of projects, could you, is it, is it easier to get a second round of funding? I just feel.
Or continual funding with some type of grant?
Pardon me?
Like a continual funding, some type of?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm hoping, I mean, that would be the perfect.
Because you would apply to the same ones again when they come up.
Yeah, like for, to employ people, right? I think that would be something I need to look for, I need to look for.
But the capital is, it's a bit hit and miss because sometimes you can't have started the project, that's a criteria. Other times, the project is started and that's a criteria. Other times, it's like specific to developing a green space. Other times, it may be specific to a specific person or to the north or whatever the case may be. So the criteria is slightly different with every grant. So it takes quite a bit to find the grants that we can fit within. And there's a bit of an advantage with coming from the Friendship Center. So then there's other grants that we are still looking at. Like there's a grant that you're looking at, we have to replace the shed. There's one that's.
Yeah. An energy efficient grant, right, for a building?
That we would be applying for.
So that was one of the quotes that I'm getting is from, to make that space energy efficient, to apply for those types of grants. We might have better luck finding money that way than just water building.
Right. Looks great though.
It is, it's beautiful, I can't wait for it to be done. Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No, if you go into the presentation that we got in our package, you can hit the hot link there and it's actually played on YouTube right now.
Oh, you did get it there, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the.
We did put the link on there in the package, yeah. It's not in my car.
Like with the pages.
Yeah, I didn't mind.
That's pretty cool.
Well, thank you very much for coming and presenting that.
Thank you.
And if we need any help, see. If we need.
Doesn't mean for jungle, but it's not like.
Yeah.
Can you break your phone?
Okay, thanks.
All right, you have the minutes of the February 13th meeting. Is there any changes? If not, can I have someone approve the minutes, please? Councilor Jessman, all in favor? Carry on. I sent my report to the council. If there's any questions, I will answer them. I, just a little update, I also met, oh, I didn't meet with him, I ambushed him, Minister Chaves and talked to him about our project and talked to him again about it. He didn't give me a real answer, but he said to me, "You guys have done a very good job of advocating for your project. It's a good project and I encourage you to keep advocating for it." So would take it for what that's worth. I also talked to MP Chris Workington and he asked that we forward our grant to him and he would take it to the appropriate people and try to push it forward for us, so. Other than that, you have my report. No questions? Nobody's moving, asking for a vote. Okay, can someone move my report? I just wanted to put it out there about Prostible. I have had nothing but great comments. Like they asked me to take that back to the team and let them know that they really enjoyed Prostible and thought it was excellent to be back in St. Daniel Park in one location and, and I even tried out the ice slide, it was fabulous.
You're still alive, so.
Yeah. So, there you go. Thank you, we'll pass that on to Lisa. Could I have someone move my report, please? Councilor Anderson, all in favor? Carry on. Council reports from Deputy Mayor.
On February 15th, I attended the ready board meeting. On February 16th, attended the meeting between council and the District Chief for Commerce. On February 22nd, I visited Councilor Anderson and the mayor who are both at Growing the North. I attended the Golden Range Society AGM. I was asked the uncomfortable question of whether or not I was old enough to be there and I paid my five bucks and I'm on. On the 24th, attended the nail meeting, virtually. And then on the 25th, attended the Victim Services Unit, RCP people.
Any questions? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Anderson.
So February 22nd and 23rd, I attended the Growing the North Conference. I'll reflect what the mayor said in her report, but I was not impressed by the whole Growing the North. I think it focused mainly on Grand Prairie and the counties surrounding Grand Prairie and did very little for anybody else. So I was rather disappointed in that.
Okay, questions for Councilor Anderson? Thank you, Councilor Anderson, Councilor Jessman.
On the 16th, I attended the chamber meeting. On the 24th, we had a Child Advocacy Center Steering Committee meeting. And the 25th, I attended the RCT formal ball.
So what did your victim services steering committee do?
We have those monthly and we, we're pretty excited as we go forward. I think we're getting some positive feedback for some long-term funding, so that's exciting. I can't say what more than that, I'm probably, Julie will might be mad at me now. But yeah, so we're pretty excited about that. We have our strategic plan that was developed and we're well underway with that, meeting all the, this year's first year's goals. So again, lots of change with the detachments, as we all know, and they're regaining those partnerships and getting some of the new members. So yeah, we're excited as we go forward.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you. Counsel Lambert.
On February sixteenth, I also attended the, the, with the Chamber of Commerce. And on the twenty-fifth, I also attended Frostable and the RCP Regional Ball. Again, kudos to everyone that took part in the Frostable and made that happen. Everyone that I talked to had a great time, it was really nice. I went there with my family, you know, had a lot of fun. It was, like I said the other day, it was, it was really nice to have it all in, all in the park in one spot. There was really, really nice. Um, and that is all I have for you.
Thank you. Question? No? Counsel Lebrun.
On February sixteenth and February twenty-third, I was in another one of the muni courses for municipal corporate planning. And then twenty-second and twenty-third, I was with, uh, the mayor and Counsel Anderson at Growing the North. Um, oh, February twenty-fifth, I attended the Peace Library System Board Meeting in Grand Prairie and then as well on the twenty-fifth, the RCP People. Very well put together by all of us.
Okay. Questions? Thank you. And Counsel Welke.
February sixteen, I attended the meeting with Council and Chamber of Commerce. Twenty-first, I had a Northwest FASD Board Meeting. And also just an update from Aaron Sorensen on The Guitar Lessons movie. Uh, opened in the large theater chains across Canada on the twenty-fourth and apparently it's doing very well. Um, some have put in for a longer duration than the initial one week uh, showing that the theaters are kind of obligated to do and there were also some one-offs, one-off nights and film festival sort of thing, but fairly positive. Um, response on the theater showing, there's still some struggles, uh, working with, uh, streaming services and, um, like CBC and getting deals with television, um, and then sort of the aftermarket, uh, streaming services, but, uh, still working at it, so. But right now it's just enjoying a nice, good run in the big, in the big city theaters all across Canada, so.
Okay, questions for Counsel Welke? Thank you. Could I have someone move council reports, please? Counsel Lebrun, all in favor? Carry. Council action list, is there anything burning? Could I have a motion then, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. Capital Project? Could I have a motion, please?
I have a question.
No, sorry.
So just, we were talking about our audio visual and I know the latest update here said, uh, by early March, it's been pushed off several times. Do we have any concrete updates?
Monday.
Yes.
Monday, that will be in place with your next council.
Yes, so, um, we've been in talks with them right now, um, Keith is just waiting for some final, um, diagrams to get the electricians in to do what's required for them before the installation. And we received their confirmed agenda and update and day-by-day, um, scope of the work that they're doing, so they'll be here Monday until Friday and then, um, Monday the sixth until the tenth and then Friday, um, everything should be installed and ready for Thursday and then Friday they're doing, um, just some training on the actual system with the staff. So then we'll be good to go for the meeting on Monday.
The staff will be going along with the time, so.
Well, it'll be staff, so we could also train as well, right? So it, it, hopefully it'll be a lot smoother than the unknown that we're used to, so.
Counsel Welke.
Um, can you refresh us on what will be in place for us up here, like how, like, and like how will we be utilizing, will, will we like mic to them?
Um, it's my understanding that there will be mics on each of the stations, there'll be screens, but, um, the mics I believe are only, um, they will only be on when the mayor asks for, like she'll, she'll have a a light to say like, you know, Counsel Welke is first in orders for the questions and Counsel Lambert and then she can,
so she'll.
And then your mic will be on when, when you're requested.
So she'll have a control panel that she'll, she'll have to learn how to.
So, so what she'll have in the council room is each of you will have a mic with a button in front of it.
Yeah.
And when you wish to speak, you push the button, it queues up on the screen and the mayor will have control.
Then I'll mute you.
And when she, yeah, or when she, and then when she pushes the button, the camera's focused on that microphone.
And then mine would tell me when mine's live or.
I believe it's only when you're requesting, yeah.
I'm sure there's some official.
Well, we'll have some.
Willing on training sessions.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Think we don't look.
It's called the March thirteenth, council meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
A live training?
Yeah.
Is there any other questions? Yes, Counsel Lambert.
Um, just a quick question, um, well, I would ask Director Schmatt, but he's not here, but I'm sure he can answer this, uh, quick. Um, are, are we still getting the donation truck from Hallow Motor Park?
Yes.
Director, is that what the woolie brush truck upgrade is in the budget?
Um.
For a hundred thousand dollars?
The what's right?
The, the, he's asking about the, the donation from, uh, Hallow Motor Products every year for the brush truck.
Oh, so that I believe is our, yes, for the woolie truck that we already have with them is, uh, we, like, uh, agreement, they give us a, um, discount on the actual brush truck.
Yeah. But I thought we, like, the one we currently have, that one was bought last year.
Um, but no, but we also, they also provide, um, like the actual coverage for vehicles, so we provide the insurance and stuff, but we don't actually own that vehicle.
I thought we started that last year.
We, we purchased the one that we had, and then they supplied the second one.
And they supplied the second.
But is the second one here?
I don't, I don't think so.
And I know, I don't think it's, I don't think it's.
That wasn't, it was.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's.
So that, like, I think that was supposed to be here in last April, right, and then it never showed up, so. So I'm just curious, like, is, like, there's a hundred thousand dollars for woolie brush truck upgrade and then below that is another brush truck replacement for a hundred eighty-five thousand, just kind of.
We'll, we'll clarify that in a good minute.
Okay, I'm checking there.
Any other questions? Okay. Onto, or could I have a motion to accept the capital? Staff's report, Counsel Welke, all in favor? Carry. Finance report?
Madam Mayor, this is your, um, interim or, uh, just projected year-end report for operations. Uh, Director Phillips can answer any questions that the council may have.
I have a question and I know, like, when I first saw this, I just spoke, cried, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, or percent over, then I saw the numbers. But, um, what is the fine distribution and cleaning services?
It's supposed to be like cleanup orders, so we get revenue, um, and we code it to the enforcement services because we, um, we didn't budget that much on our cleanup orders, um, and you will also see the revenue increase in roads, streets, walk and lighting. It's just where everything is coded to, so the roads one is, um, a lot of that is the revenue for the provincial building, the provincial cleanup orders, but, so, or provincial fines.
Okay, so those are cleanup orders, not cleaning services?
Yes, it's just a, yes.
And the, the airport terminal building, we were a hundred and eighty-nine percent over?
Um, no, so the, the project that we have, um, we were trying to separate the expense coding for the task force, so the expenses that are coming in for the task force, so the revenues are actually coded to, um, airport, but the terminal building project that we have is coded to the airport building. So it's just, it's just the revenues are coded in a different department. We just wanted to separate the expenses from the actual, um, regular expenses that we have for the specific project.
I don't like those big numbers.
Yeah.
One thousand two hundred and nineteen percent used budgeted.
Yes. So and that one was our land purchase, yeah, so what we budgeted is definitely not, that wasn't included.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, could I have someone move the finance report then?
Oh.
Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. All business, the RFD for the maintenance to Mackenzie Rail. North rail.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, this is being brought forward by administration, um. Last spring, we experienced fairly severe flooding on the south end of town because of the, uh, restricted water flow under the Canadian National Railway bed. Um, council had discussed approaching Canadian National Railways about maintenance of La Mantra Line. The, uh, uh, we were in the process of doing so when it was requested that that be added to the tri-council agenda because it was a common issue in Mackenzie County. Uh, which we did, uh, the tri-council passed a motion to write a letter, uh, we included that letter in the tri-council package, but the reference to populated areas was removed from the tri-council letter. So that, my, our concern as administrations that does not address the concerns of the town high level because they could maintain a section fifty miles out of town that would not address our flooding issue. Uh, so administrations is asking for direction on whether council would like to write a separate letter or perhaps wait a bit to see if CN responds to the other letter, uh, and then follow up with our specific issues. I spoke with Counsel Eric, sorry, just. Uh, Director Strug today and as far as we're aware, there's been no maintenance done on the culverts in the, uh, Mackenzie Road tomorrow morning.
So I guess the intention at, at tri-council was that one was not, you know, like they were afraid that they would just do the populated areas and not the other areas. Um, mine would be like, why wouldn't they do all the areas that are affected?
Well, the entire railway, from where I understand, is considerably maintenance, but.
Just cleaning the culverts?
No, just even fixing the rail bed.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and some of it because the culverts have collapsed.
Um, I would suggest that we see what CN does with this and then write a new letter. Seems that this was a consensus of all tri-council to remove it. Um, we, as council that were there, we're not, you know, like, we weren't thinking of that, you know, just the town high level flooding.
I, our, our recommendation is that we do wait to see if CN responds, but we'd wait no longer than the end of April because we will probably be back in this by that time or in May. But they are projecting a fairly big spring again, so maybe it could be a bad, bad time again this year, but we don't have the snow cover we have last year.
I think the other suggestion would be that we ask each of the municipalities if they could, uh, put it back in because there was a misunderstanding of the people at the meeting, like, we weren't aware that that was specifically put in there because of the town high level?
Well, well, not just the town high level, but the, the concerns brought forward by Reed Nelson in the October tri-council specifically related to the farm land and the farmhouse that were also flooded. So it was the populated portion of Mackenzie County as well.
What do you think?
I don't think it ever hurts to write more letters rather than less, um. I just think if we wait until April twenty-fourth, that's not gonna give them a chance to do anything before we get flooding, like.
I would suggest then that we give both municipalities a heads up that we're gonna write a separate letter because we can't, uh, afford to be flooded out again. Like, just give them a heads up and say, hey, you know, we're going to write one specific to the town high level as well.
I don't think it has to be specific.
Or specific to populated areas.
Populated areas.
What does the rest of council think?
I agree.
Yes?
All right, I agree, um. Your meeting with CN, that's, what is it, the CPAA or whatever that?
CRE.
Um, has anything, has this, like, these issues have anything?
No. Yeah, no.
So anything?
We haven't addressed that at all.
So I'm definitely, I think we should write a letter, yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm all in favor. Well, do you want a motion?
Please, um, yeah, I'm writing this up.
Okay, does someone wanna make that motion, that the town send a letter and that we notify the other two municipalities that we're writing a separate one?
That would be alternate one with the.
No, make complimentary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Those closed? One. Carry. All right, uh, water, waste water.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I understand there was a question at the last, uh, council meeting in regards to the dispute resolution process that administration had placed in the agreement with the Denny Talk or the, uh, distribution, or the Water and Waste Act Agreement with the Denny Talk for the National Reserve. Um, I did put as an explanation as to what our logic was in, in the package. And what we were trying to do is, because it's, the, the the sale of water as a, as a necessary commodity becomes quite complex. Um, and we were trying to avoid any party becoming confrontational, so what we were looking at is that you're going from mediation, which is where you basically sit there and negotiate with a third party to a non-binding arbitration where you both lay out your cases, have a third party say this is what you have to do, but still allow you to go back to another set of negotiations if you want, rather than being bound by the process. It still leaves litigation, but I mean, this, every time this comes, this is getting more and more expensive and there are other alternatives, of course, to dealing with the, with the situation. We hope that we never get into that situation with the Denny Talk, um, but I guess we will have to be prepared for it. It's, uh, plan for the worst and hope for the best. This was my question, and just from a cost perspective, um, the cost of doing arbitration is probably similar to the cost of doing the trial. Yeah. And if you're doing non-binding arbitration, you may be spending all of this money, it's not binding, and then you're spending all that money again, going to order trial.
I, I agree with you, I, hopefully there's never a disagreement, but the reason that these clauses are in there is because they're not needed until they're really needed, um.
Yeah, no, it, it, just our thought was that by going on binding, it gives you a chance to have an independent third party look at and say, this is what you guys should be doing. And then you have that chance to discuss it again.
But they can't impose that decision.
No, no.
Chuck, yeah. I don't like arbitration, yeah. It just costs many, our Northern Lights, twenty-one million dollars.
Not the process, I'm assuming the outcome.
Yes. The arbitrator ruled in favor of the contractor, not the municipality. Yes?
Um, so what's the first level mediation?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is or isn't a third party in mediation?
There's a third party. There's a third party, but, but the mediator only guides the process, they don't interfere. Generally won't interfere.
Okay. I think though then, I agree with Deputy Mayor, if that process is clear and transparent and then it still goes to arbitration, I think that it should be binding, um. You're basically getting all that out in the mediation and then both parties know if it's non-binding, they know what that means, so you would want to try to work it out during mediation if it ever came down to that. So you're kind of doing two levels of mediation really.
We are selling only water.
Wow, the, the difference between the two processes, the media gets both parties to try to work together. In a, in an arbitration situation, you're presenting your cases to a third party and they're giving you a ruling.
I'd rather go to trial. That way you can argue your cases.
Well, you can argue, but arbitration is basically essentially a trial, but you have an expert instead of a judge who may not have any expertise in that area. It's the lawyer's job to explain that all to the judge, whereas the arbitrator presumably is going to be someone well versed in the law in that particular area. Arbitration is designed to be quicker and hopefully cheaper than a trial, but not necessarily, but all of the prep work going into it would be identical to a trial, so all of your documentary stuff, there would be questioning, there would be the hearing, um, both sides can argue their position. To me, it just seems like a lot of work to say at the end of the day, yeah, we really don't like this, so we're not gonna agree. You may hear the same thing at the end of the trial, but it's the other side.
You may hear the same thing again in the trial, but is the other side going to then be forced to incur all of those costs to make their position on a second time?
And, and I think the, the optics of arbitration, say binding arbitration, looks a lot better than a trial. Versus mediation going straight to a trial.
I'm sort of with administration on this, that we would hope it would never get there over the sale of water.
Absolutely.
Maybe if it was a water line and a, and a building. What does council think?
I'd make a motion that we go into agreement.
That what?
I'd make the motion for the recommendation number one.
All in favor? Opposed if any? Carry.
Madam Mayor, Director Welke, you have your next three items.
Okay, thank you. She only have the next two and have to come in camera with a.
Oh, she got fourteen-one as well.
Well, hungry, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. Um, this, uh, I have a generate faculty or community manager, because this calls directly under her purview, so she can add on to my presentation. Happy to have her come today. Um, so administration updated the tourism strategy that was developed in two thousand and eleven. Um, and we incorporated additional three years of initiatives, and that provided a framework for the last three years and the rest of this year. Part of the reason why we just developed that strategy was because there was policies and reserves tied directly to the strategy. So just by furthering, keeping the original, um, strategies that were there and the tactics and then expanding them allowed us to keep that plan. Um, so we have updated the status on each of our action items and the first two pages of the plan are sort of an overview of the entire plan, and the next six pages go into more detail. And there's a section there where we have everything prioritized in the status. And Jen is just going to bring us through the status there and a little bit talk about some of the items there that we're proud of and some of the ones that made a bit of a challenge.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so a few things we wanted to highlight was we did the fixture fence program in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we received positive feedback from the community. We're looking at doing maybe something a little different going forward, maybe doing a best yard contest or garden contest or something to beautify your space. Um, we've done a good job promoting the partners in tourism over the past few years. We've had their logos in the prostable. We've had a bar set up at Flamingo, which was a success. Um, we also have their logos at any events that they've sponsored, and we pay for their membership with MFTA. So they'll be involved in all of their publications. So that's really exciting. Um, we also published our visitor guide, which was very exciting. It was very pretty. We're all very proud of it. The museum hosted a logo contest, and so now visitors can buy swag at the museum with the new logo. Um, we also worked with groups like Farmers Market to create a board so they could stay open. Um, they had a really great season and they're hoping for another great season. Um, and then the museum has been doing their temporary displays, which have been a huge success. So this year we'll be working on the oil field display.
So moving forward, the tourism improvement reserve that was started in two thousand and twelve, it's a three percent destination marketing fee from the hotels that participated. As of the end of two thousand and twenty-two, there was a balance of about a hundred and sixty-one thousand, that's unaudited. Um, and then we have about ninety thousand allocated for this year. So how the reserve is set up is that we pay for part of the tourism leaders' wages, part of our winter summer missions, which is a possible and that sort of thing. So that's where the, the allocation comes from. And then our tourism enhancement grant, we have thirty thousand dollars that's allocated towards that every year. So for next year, we're looking at maybe about seventy thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-four. So with this, we still have some initiatives left, as council said, that we're working on for this year within the, within the tourism grant. But I'm just wondering, moving forward, whether we wanted to take a look again at whether we further that destination marketing fee should be considered with the hotel owners, whether we want to look at like a new planning thing would be a part of, whether we want to include possibly economic development, like we have that point three-three person that's going to be doing some economic development issues, whether we wanted to, not issues, but um, whether we wanted to like strategize and put together like a larger plan. Um, so a few different ideas. So don't know whether council would like us to come back with a framework and ideas and what we might look for the year upcoming. I think it's good to start on it now.
Council? I woke up in the middle of the night thinking, oh my God, what are we going to do for tourism? Money were pretty low. So I think it's a good idea to get started on if we want to do the destination fee again with hotels. See, get a framework from them, see what they would like if, if they're interested in partnering. Um, I'm not quite clear on what you mean by economic development with partner with them.
Well, we have, like, there's a lot of, if you look through the, um, a lot of the different initiatives that were originally developed back in two thousand and eleven, one of them were actually like, like the downtown enhancement, a lot of them were more specific to economic development and they worked to tourism. So there is a lot of overlap. Like kind of one does the others. We just hope there might be some overlap where we could specify this one would be tourism, this one would be economic development, but it would be one greater plan and having all these full parts. That was sort of.
That would fit in tourist strategic plan, like, right?
Yes.
But, but I honestly think we need to address the tourism fund if we're going to continue to do things like that to enhance the community. What does the rest of council think?
I think it's a great idea. I'm just, um, trying to look at my phone for the last time I stayed at a hotel in Evans, and I think theirs is at five percent.
Was that the destination fee or tourism fee?
I think it's a tourism fee.
Because the tourism fee goes to the province. The destination fee goes to the municipality.
There, there's a couple on there.
Yeah.
There's also going to be a sustainability fee as well, too, that the hotel has the option eventually to, and may help with different sustainable issues in the hotel.
Yeah, so I, I think it would be prudent to meet with the hotels and explain that especially Cher, and explain that, you know, this is what we've been using the money for.
Happyburgers.
Madam Mayor, sorry, um, just thought this is the four points, chair, and this would be the Grand Prairie, but it looks like Grand Prairie is charging a two percent tourism, uh, destination marketing fee. And I think the tourism might be a slight four percent.
Yeah, I think the highest they can charge is three percent, his members.
I think.
That's what we had.
For destination, yeah.
But I mean, these are things that we can share with the, our partners in tourism and see if they would like to see that, you know, started again.
But Madam Mayor, initially they, our partners had some concerns, but I think with this, with them, with Jennifer, with them, and they alleviated a lot of the issues.
Well, there's a lot of funds that's going into advertising, and they weren't necessarily seeing that that was beneficial. So they, they have been happy with the, um, the, with the guide that we did and with some of the other initiatives, with the enhancement grant and that sort of thing. They have to see the value of it, because a lot of administrative work for, for them to, to put the, put the in. And there is legislation around this too. So I had to run a report to council before, so I'd have to refresh myself as to which are allowed to charge at each different level. But, um, yeah.
Did you have a question? Um, did the, and, and it ended in two thousand and eighteen just because of the, the municipality's agreement with the hotels?
Well, we had a fair amount of money in the reserve at that point, and, um, it wasn't depleting. And the hotel owners couldn't see the point to keep putting more and more money into this reserve that was sitting there, and they weren't seeing anything coming from it. So at that point, they just said, that's it.
Yeah, at the end of two thousand and nineteen, I believe it's six hundred and eighty-seven thousand or something sitting in there. And, and I think it was like seven or something. It was maybe, maybe eighty, just, just what we used for operating that was devoted. There was no grants hardly that were given out of there or anything.
So I know we gave some for the film, but where did, then between two thousand and eighteen and now, that got to leave?
Um, this year in two thousand and twenty-three, so we have maybe like the audited statements on all of our year-ends and done, but we did an estimated amount. We're looking at, there will be, there will be a possibility in two thousand and twenty-four budget that we will need to figure out what we're going to do with operating costs. Operating on its own is about fifty or so, about sixty thousand dollars. Plus we have thirty thousand that we give up for the tourism enhancement grant. So that includes like, you know, the grants for, um, hockey, the hockey that comes in, that's grants for the egg society, the rodeo, all of, all of those things that comes out of the tourism.
We can work them out frivolously.
No, I know.
The council changed its philosophy, what year, twenty?
Twenty, twenty twenty?
As to how to use this money. Because originally it was supposed to go back in grants to encourage groups to come in and use hotel rooms and then when that money was sitting there, council decided, well, what are we going to use it for? So.
Yeah, we collected it for a few years before we even started using it. So and it, I think we changed it about five times maybe. But I mean, we're under Ruth's guidance, it's been great. And I think the hotel owners have appreciated it, so.
So opening up the dialogue is, I do, yeah, I agree.
No, but I'm just thinking for, you know, things like the structure park and, and stuff like that, that you know, if we can't access grant funding somewhere and we're doing this on our own, that, you know, over the course of maybe three or four years, we could raise enough funds through something like this to, to cover a significant part of that. And this isn't any cost to the hotel operators, this is a fee they're collecting. You know, as we've been talking about, it doesn't matter where you travel now, you're paying these on every hotel room. If you're going into an airport, you're paying an airport improvement fee, you know, what it is. This seems to be the way that, uh, different levels of governments are, are raising funds for specific purposes without taxing for something like all the residents.
Does someone want to make a motion? That we developed a strategy and present it back to council, a framework? Do we, do we want to add the, to go into talks with the hotels to this?
Yeah. Direction.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, make some motion, all in favor. Carry. Um, banner of remembrance.
So, Deputy Mayor and Council, this was tabled back, I think about a month or a couple of months ago. There was, there was some confusion as to the appointment of some of the members and their terms of reference. So since that time, I brought back the terms of reference, we made them a little bit more generic. So it was a little bit simpler and easier to go and make sure that we keep community members and people engaged. So then therefore I'm just recommending these appointments and manuals as presented.
Could I have a motion from?
I think I need to accuse myself of this decision, family member on the recommendation.
So not making any burden on it.
Yeah, they're common sense, they're, they are, yeah.
Okay.
It's not a task force anymore, it's a.
Oh, okay.
It's a committee, it's a committee.
Big bucks.
Yeah. I just stepped up.
You act, you absolutely can recuse yourself from this. Somebody want to make a recommendation if there's no questions? All make that recommendation and all in favor? Carry.
He can stay over there.
He's called an actor.
Don't let him in.
You were listening outside the door. Okay, moving to fourteen-one correspondence for action for action.
To you. I didn't know if council had any questions, but I just had a request for a letter of support and, um, I wrote a letter of support, I drafted one, uh, included in the package. Um, do you know if council had any questions or?
Council, did you have any questions about the letter of support? No? So it's already been written. Council, move that we send the letter, please.
I'll lay that. Were we not moving that to eighteen-two or differently?
What? No, thirteen-two I moved. All in favor? Oh, Councillor Anderson, it's in correspondence for action, it's from.
Oh, is it, is this the one we moved?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor? Carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have someone move correspondence for information if there's no questions? Councillor Jessman, all in favor? Carry. So that ends our public portion of our meeting this evening. Could I have a motion for, to move council into? In camera, thank you. Councillor Librian?